It is 12:30, we're gonna call this meeting to order, our February tenth workshop. And we are, Dan, you were on, I think we're gonna talk a little bit about the Buttonwoods parking project update, and I know that you had sent out some drawings. All right, you're on.
The way I'm gonna approach the Buttonwoods project is it's a couple of holes. The first thing is, we're trying to provide all these materials here, is a memory sequence that we came up with along the Divisive Division, from one hundred block to four hundred blocks. Now, you'll see, if you look at this, if you look at the plan itself, you see numbers in red, numbers in blues, and numbers in green. The first thing we're gonna do, as soon as it gets warm, people will go out and actually roll the, putting the numbers in red. So, so I can tell by the first thing, like, it'd be one hundred block and a five hundred block of the ones, which everybody initially will get one space per vehicle at a moment until the actual construction is done. For the two hundred, three hundred, four hundred, six hundred block, we should have enough room to actually put in two spaces for everybody at the moment, so. When it gets over, sometime, probably about a month or so, when the paint touches go up, we are planning to actually, to actually cover these areas and make sure we complete two hundred block, three hundred block, four hundred, six hundred.
Dan, Dan, is the marking gonna be on the front of the curb, or is it on the?
On the asphalt. My intention would be on the asphalt, where the, where the end of the tape line is, I'll put it right there.
That's where they were again. It was on the asphalt?
Yeah.
So, when it snowed, they knew where their spot was again?
Yeah, hopefully about that time. That's my intention, we're actually subbing out price, first of doing the house, making sure that it's, it's good with your job, but that's, that's my intention, we're still doing, hoping to fill them up, right? And the paint is more.
The, the square footage of the number, is it like a large number, or is it a small number?
I have to find different fonts, I'm not sure yet.
I, I don't have any preference in the number size, I just kinda like...
We'll go between the two, I just haven't started moving it, so.
I think this'll address a lot of issues.
I think it'll address a lot of issues. You fit everywhere you could fit overflow parking, and it makes quite a difference in the community.
We won't have overflow parking, though, but this is definitely, though.
Right, now, if you're like...
But you don't have this project now, keep now, dead yet.
Well, in the second part.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so these overflow parking areas, intent was to have them in place, and when you do displace people, you know, because they've run them out of places, they would have a place to park, but they won't now, overflow parking. Where are they gonna park at then? We don't know. The initial was not to do it until, so we had the, the parking done. Of course, they wanted us to speed it up, so we don't have an alternative to the park.
But we can open the spot, but we can extract the, again, we can address the two, the three, the four, the six on the block right now, giving you two spots at each. For the one hundred and the five hundred, we can get one spot in the deck go, and then, as we do construction, you know, we'll pop it out, then when it's done, we'll get a second spot. So, everybody can get at least one for the one hundred and five hundred block, and then two for the raindrops.
But now, thinking, just to help me understand this, if, if there's no overflow parking, currently, then that means probably some people only have one spot anyhow?
Possibility.
And...
You could be, you could be no worse for wear, that's why we want to address it now, to speed up, there's some reason why we can't, at least put the numbers down ahead of time, which will address the bulk of the problem. And everybody else who's ever in there, you know, at least, at least agrees to have one spot in front of their house. So, I think that will address a couple of the concerns. In respect to the construction itself, we're going to tie in this work with the curb, with East Main Street, we should have advertised, we should for advertising it by the end of this month, then we'll get the contractor bids and see what's going on from there, and both jobs have been done to current, so. When that's done, we can actually get started, then have the wall, and let's see if we put over three hundred and five. We're at one hundred and five.
How's the board feeling? Want to move forward with it, I mean, in concept, or?
I've got a couple of questions.
The, where is the, where is the total amount that it's gonna cost to do a project? We had talked about that months ago. And then where does the selling out, the number being put down, fit into that? And then, thirdly, I'm not sure if we should number, number it right now, or just do it all at one time? Especially if you start doing, one side of the neighborhood moves two spots, then you have people coming in getting angry saying, hey, they have two spots, where's my two spots? And then just get it all done at one time. Let the community know, or that neighborhood know, this is when it's gonna be done. Especially since there's no overflow parking, no assigned overflow parking, that isn't even a build yet. So, then if we start feeling questions, that's something that could be...
Some of the questions, what DJ is saying I was gonna ask, if there was gonna be any mailings or communication with them, that's just process that plays.
See, the theory was, in the beginning, that once we had the overflow parking in place, then you can notify the people and offer them the alternative. If you, if you pre-number all this, you won't have an alternative to let them park, because the whole issue was, there's no place to park. We don't have the resources to do it, right, at this point. Now, what complicates this project is the fact that it craves more impervious surface, so that's why this, this rain garden has this stormward management, so it's being included in this project, it's not simply throwing curb and gutter out there, it's actually to have this stormward pattern. The state wall requires us to name this stormward, so that's a more complex project than you think, and so that'll answer the commissioner's question, we don't have this plan done yet with an estimate. We don't have it any done yet, it's not done till, when did Todd say it's gonna be done? We're at a month or so.
Well, we're, we're shooting for advertising at the end of this month, and then basically contract to...
And then we'll have a full estimate.
Yeah, then we all...
Yeah.
The, the question that I had was, can't we move forward and give everyone one parking spot in front of their house?
Yes.
And that wouldn't be affected by any overflow parking, it wouldn't be affected by anything if you gave them one spot?
I've had to, I had to check and do that, but...
But, you know, that's just my comments, I, I know what's gonna happen if we, at the very, we, we talk about Buttonwoods, it seems like at every meeting, trying to come up with the solutions, it's not an easy one, and I, I love the diagrams quite frankly, at least we can see where all the spots are. But, from the lady that was here the other evening, and she's getting in at late, at 2:30, 3:00 in the morning after her shift at work, she has no parking spots, and she has to be off of the road parking and walking through. From a safety perspective, she'd have a parking spot, hopefully in front of her house, if, if someone hadn't taken it. And, and I think that if we could give everyone one spot, and then, as soon as we get the overflow side done, then we can give everyone two spots, I think it'd be a nice compromise. But, I'm, I'm all ears with the board and, and given, you okay with that?
I'm okay with one spot, absolutely. I think something should be on our website, too, so it's very easy for all of us to say, hey, go to our website, you can see exactly the timeline, I think there should be a timeline, this is what we're doing, I'd like here the next thing that we're doing, and a general area, and a general timeframe, and then product completion, blah, 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 blah. This way we can get very easy. And I agree with that, and our website, and it drives more people to our website to take a look at it.
Earl, you have any comments?
I, I agree with the one spot, because I thought the lady that came in here, and that's one thing that we least accommodate now, was the laid-out person not being a parking contractor, resident, but that second phase would be, just amongst the, residents all know that there is another phase coming soon, but it should at least, now we know that we're working on it. Now, we hold the project up, we're back to day one, where we just have no arguments about where someone has to walk all the streets just to get to their house, so I agree with the one spot.
So, in thirty days, we'll have a timeline, is it thirty days, forty-five days, we'll have a timeline, and protect the cost for the project?
Well, you should have a plan, and a, and a cost.
You should have a cost, about, yeah, about thirty days, forty-five days, you should really think, that's why we put it out there, add that in with the curb, with East Main Street, and they pull the numbers, then out, but what? The reason why we're, we're gonna put it out early, because we were trying to get the capacity to that, because that's what we want, the contractors to hit this, this is a good, quick, easy, first job for them, so...
So, that'd be a bit... So, let's give them a timeline, real quick, so let's write it down, see where it falls in. Okay, so in the next, would you say in the next two weeks, they'll have one parking spot number? If weather permitted?
I'll say, I'll say wait until, until about a month, I want to get warm for me, let's tell me.
Okay, so we could say by March fifteenth?
We'll shoot for March fifteenth. But it's for May, not October.
The...
It's company tax day, isn't it?
Yes, so we could give them one spot. Then are we looking at the final estimate? Do you take about thirty days from that point, or thirty days from now, or forty-five days from now?
Make it, make it forty-five days from now, we should, we should have everything out advertised and the bids back.
So, we're gonna say April Fool's Day, April first...
We should have the bids back and evaluate by then.
Bids back. And then we could do a, so now, I'm trying to get to where we're in, in June, did we, we didn't budget for any of this?
I have an idea. I mean, we did budget for the East Main Street project, so, I believe it was six, seven weeks of that, I believe. So, I'd like to see how the bids come in, just the way doing house versus Buttonwoods, if it's possible, I might be able to swing both, that's all we could consider, in terms of...
I don't wanna throw this in there, but, as you say, forty-five days, that allow the time, in respect to be out on the street, set up a pre-bid meeting, have the pre-bid meeting, have the bids evaluated, and have a recommendation from the ward, sending out a contract, and getting, I mean, performance and payment bonds back, and all the, that's a timely process.
My, my intention is...
It costs like, I don't know, seventy-five thousand bucks, or something, whatever it might cost.
Well, I'd like to have a firm date that we can tell the folks from Buttonwoods, I think that's what we're looking for, is a firm date that we can tell the folks from Buttonwoods that, on this date is when you'll get your second parking spot, and the overflow parking, hopefully, would be completed.
We better wait then, and talk to Todd about, and lay out a timeline, because see, you're thinking about throwing this out and having the bids come back, and then getting a contractor building, but there's so many steps in that process, that because of our permanent policy, you know, just getting a con, they have ten days, just to get the contract back, once the notice of award goes back, and get the payment bonds, and everything. So, I mean, and after that, there's to proceed, you have a certain time limit, and there's to proceed for them to mobilize, and then, once they do, you have to give them so many days to complete the project. So, I mean, you know...
June thirty, if I have to, we're at least in the five.
Seventy-five days.
Forty-five, so forty-five, I'd like to have the, I'd like to have the bids back, but within forty-five days, they're back, so that's my goal from there.
We probably have to bid it back, but you, that would have a lot of, the pre-bid meeting.
Right, at least we can all, the last I went from there, so at least in forty-five days, we should be able to keep the hard numbers.
So, could I say that we could start construction by July first, if everything was approved and budgeted correctly?
Yeah, and then if it's earlier, it's earlier, but if not, we have a date where you're not rushing anything.
Not that big project.
Okay, so we're looking at one spot by March fifteenth, and then construction, construction by July first. Okay, we're gonna hold you to that.
So, April first, you're gonna have...
I'm gonna have the bid back by then.
And you'll have the entire cost of those projects?
That's, that's my intention, yes.
So, this way we can, see how it is.
And well, my intent for the East Main Street project is to have a subcontractor do the curb, the rest I'll do in half, that's, that's my intention right now, so. That would try to do both, is the curb.
Do we need any more directional blackwoods?
Good.
Sounds good.
Okay. All right. East Main Street. Did you include, what are we doing there?
Again, we're tying in, we're advertising the Buttonwood shop there in the month, we're tying in the curb, with Main Street as well. So, contractor can price that out to remove the existing granite curb in four years, that's the place concrete curb. Based on that, and that gives my guys a starting point, where I can actually start moving to work, on Main Street, so.
When do you think you'll start the East Main Street project?
I think by May first.
Okay, and that would be having someone for the curb, and then your guys would move forward with the project?
Right. I'm tying that in with Buttonwood, because that's the other thing. When we're trying to shoot for the same contractor who took to Buttonwood, we pulled the curb off, so.
Did, did we make any final decisions on what it's gonna look like?
Yeah, that's, that's what you need to know.
Yeah.
Because there was opposition to this design by the board commission, you know, it was just outside the street.
You're right.
You know, it was a two-foot, it's a two-foot section right there, twenty-four inch section of, of concrete, and then sixty inches of, I mean, brick, and then sixty inches of concrete.
Is, is there any objection to move forward with a project that looks like that? From the board, are we allowed to do that, right? You can give your opinion, too, I mean, that's cool.
I, unfortunately, I'm...
Without bid, you're gonna need this, this is the bid, right, to tell the contractors what you want to bid on, you can't just speculate it.
Right, no, I, I think, we're, it's about safety there, on East Main Street, and that's what it's been about for the past few years. And that's what's gonna work, to make that sidewalk safe for everyone, and, again, do something with the brand and the bricks that are there, reuse them, and, so we're not just getting rid of them.
Well, you weren't getting rid of them, we were gonna use what brickwork is there now, will, will be that act then.
Some of it, yes.
There'll be actual work, because there's a, there's sections where there is a lot of brick, and there's sections where there isn't, and so the point...
Right, but we're gonna have some that we're not using.
I'm not sure how much...
We'll, we'll prioritize it, we'll address it, and then it's, the thing we have to do is, after we pour the con, at the same time as we pour the concrete curb, we'll start removing some of the brick as well, replace the timber with some sown dust, and see if this stuff is actually working, so, we'll have an idea, what's going to be, what will be actually, so, you know, pour the concrete.
You can have a project out later, maybe, right? That is...
When you say that, the lead...
Project, as far as the, the total package, the project itself, this is the only thing that you're...
All right, that's, well, my intention is, is to have the project with curb, in the, in the, you know, specification, or whatever, anyway.
But that's, I think, I'd put that together, because, see, that hasn't been approved by State Highway.
They're probably not getting it right now.
In cases of State Highway, they have to approve what you're going on with, maintenance of traffic.
My thing is, you know, there's a, I, I don't know if you'll get it done by May, first or not, maybe, I'm not sure if that State Highway review and maintenance of traffic will be done.
Well, they had, they, they've actually looking at it now, we just don't, I'm sort of pushing the curb with timber in here right now, so there is a, so. Not dissing any of the...
Very good. Any questions, any further questions for Dan, while we got him, about anything else in light for him?
In light?
Very good. All right, thanks.
I did have, someone mentioned something in front of the, senior center, senior center here, says something, sidewalks are kind of rough for them.
What's wrong, Holly Street?
Yeah, Old Main Street.
Oh, me, one of them.
Yeah, I, yes. Sidewalks are, sidewalks are coming out of the, late when they're built, hiding, you can't quite see it, but just take a look, it's a secret, so I can go on with that.
Okay. Very good. Thanks, Dan. All right. Bring a couple chairs up, Severn Trent, come join us.
Well, hello.
Hey, Jim, how are you doing?
Good to see you.
There we go.
Yeah, it is.
We got the whole squad.
Okay, well, we haven't seen you.
Yeah.
No.
Okay, thank you guys for all coming, this is part of our budgeting process, and, and kind of our planning, as we tend to move ahead in the next fiscal, and we had asked Severn Trent to provide to us what you believe that we need to have our plant running at top form, so we can continue to win that award-winning water, and, of course, the beautiful flow of our by-product into the system, so, yes. So, you have provided to us...
He's right, we had to tell him what he was...
Well, I guess, I guess before we start with what we're looking at for fiscal sixteen, seventeen, I guess, where do we stand at with what we've accomplished from last year's fiscal? There was a, a few items that we've, are we, are we in pretty good standing with both plants? Give us a kind of report, Jason, if you could, or...
Yeah, well, we're still waiting on fixing the roof of the existing wasteland lab, I know that was approved last year.
Are you waiting on us to get it done, or?
Um, I think Dan had a, Dan was here, he had a contractor come out and take a look at it, so, it's just a matter of getting it done, I've done what you need to do, so, I'm waiting to get some, some information back from the guy at the game, and, as far as that, from last year, I haven't been bringing anything else from last year.
Lou probably knows if there's anything that we, we...
Everything's fine.
All right, there you go, how you like that?
That's the only thing I can think of, that wasn't done from last year.
Okay, very good. So, moving into this next fiscal, we need to budget for what, these items, and can you explain to the board, maybe we can go through each item, without giving us a lot of detail?
We'll, Jason, kind of, these are these, and then we've got Richard McGuire here, he's been instrumental, helped us with the installation of that influence stream, as well as working with us on the water treatment plant, we have the fiber block units. And then Jim Beckstrom, you know, he's, he's been involved with us, as we discussed some of these things, and what's the best way to approach, and that sort of thing. And then ours got his various expertise, and I've got a few things in here myself, so...
Okay, very good. And, and I guess I'm gonna jump to one item that, and I, we may have asked you already years ago, when, of course, I, I was probably, Charlie and I were probably the only two here when we first formed our partnership with Severn Trent, and I remember that there was a, a quote at one time for Severn Trent to actually handle our water and sewer billings. And what I'm finding with some of the challenges that we have, you know, we're, we're fairly lean when it comes to personnel in a lot of departments, and when we have a key person out, it kind of throws a, a monkey wrench into the, the whole system. And I'm finding that out more and more as we go forward here. And I think one thing that I would like to see, and you'd have to work with our staff to see if that's something that you can do, or can't do, or, and what our obstacles are, because I know that by having control of it ourselves, we're able to adjust to people's problems pretty quickly. And I think that if we source something like this, it could be a challenge to be able to react as quickly as, as we can, but you may have a proposal, or if you think this is something that you could handle for us in, in the future, maybe, maybe you could come up with what our obstacles are, and you might be able to answer our objections. But I would like to investigate that option as a opportunity. Are you currently doing anyone else's water and sewer bills, do I? At that, at that time, and in fact, it's good that you're here, Jim, I think you might have been the main proposal years ago.
Well, we, we, that was tied in many years ago, when we were talking about meters, because when, when we, we started with the water in ninety-six, and really, you guys lit us up pretty good.
We didn't approve the budget.
Well, no, you, you...
DJ?
We'd been in wastewater.
We didn't approve the budget!
We'd been in wastewater for three years, but we showed our faces on the waterside, when, when it was proposed, and we considered, you all consider us, the waterside, we came in, said, who are you? Weird guys, we've got a wastewater plant, but you don't hear that, so, hey, we talked about, after that, we talked about meters, because once we started doing the meter reading back then, in ninety-six, we noticed that there were a lot of issues with different types of meters, questionable accuracy because of age, new meters. It's gotta be refined now, that depending upon type of meter, usually you change them out about every fifteen years, because they start with exact accuracy, you technically have a lot of trouble, which means if somebody has a leak, it doesn't register on the leak. You know, if the meter's very worn, and you can lose a lot of water. And that's when you, we wanted to start doing accounting, you know, where's, we look at the meters from what we're putting out, and we compare to the water bills, and then we look at the other non-build uses of water, you know, the might be a fire company, or something like that, but they, they know they use the water, but they're gonna fill it for it. So, we, we compare the two, and we say, okay, where did we miss? You know, we put out the meters from the plant, so we put out this much, the totally records say we got much we received, and if we're, if we're anywhere above ten, fifteen percent, that's considered, you know, ten, ten, fifteen percent is sort of the norm, plus we have a normal system. Sometimes it's meter, meter accuracy, you know, if you're two percent off on one meter, and one, two percent off on the others, you, you used up that half of that, you know, just in the meter inaccuracy. So, that, that never came to a conclusion, but that was the kind of thing we wanted to do, to track the water losses, see what's being lost, you know, and we can, you know, that all that costs money in terms of chemicals and power, and if we can find those leaks, point them out, off the mark, get them solved, then, you know, then the, the cost goes down. So, that's something we would like to do, but in terms of billing, we do billing for, you see, we most, for, you know, all the bugs we operate in Houston, we do it for several facilities down in Florida that we operate.
Community service districts.
Community service districts, so...
Including the dog catcher, parks, recreation, a lot of that.
So, we've got, we've got the ability to do the billing, question is, you know, how, how much do you want? You know, we have a billing system ourselves, you know, we can set it up, you know, set your system up, and our system, and then, you know, you guys would enter it in from here, access it from here, just like you do your current system, and then we'd be on the back end, making sure, you know, things are running like they're supposed to, and that sort of stuff. All the way to the point where we can even do customer service, we do that at a few facilities, where, you know, when they call in, ask about their water bills, they're talking directly to our people. So, we've got a wide range of things we can do here, and Steve, you know, he discussed it somewhat, you know, last week, when we met with Steve, and, you know, we'd be glad to provide a proposal, we just need to probably sit down and discuss, what, what do you want?
See, we have a lot of customers come in and pay, or are paying in person, so, if Severn Trent was billing, I'm not sure how we would, we would have to maintain our staff and then pay for other services on top of what we're already paying for, so it might not be an advantage, it was financial.
It goes, like you said, we actually have customer service people in customer service offices of cities, so that, you know, they're there in the office, that's who they come in, and they, you know, they handle all that, all the way up to that level. If it's our billing system, then in essence, there's no difference from what they're doing now, other than it's our billing system versus the municipal?
Or municipal, that's great.
Right, okay. And maybe that there's, it may be just some consultant work we can do, but we've got people that have been doing this for years, and know how to get down into the nuts and bolts, figure out what do we need to get this up to where you want it to be, and maybe, you know, that may work out just as well as, you know, if your billing system works, then why replace it with ours? You know, I'm not trying to talk ourselves down in Florida here, but, you know, a wide range. It's like, in, in some ways, it's a menu, I mean, we can, for example, we can take the readings, and...
Which you do.
Yes, yeah, we make them, and the folks actually take them from there, and create bills, you know, that'd be done somewhere else, outside of here.
And that wouldn't have anything to do with us collecting the money.
Exactly. I mean, we can do everything, just, you know, and then they get a bill, to, you know, with envelopes that say it's down in Elkin, you know, and, and we're sort of visible in the process of producing, you know, of doing that billing, and then, you know, you can still have your staff...
That, that's kind of what I was picturing, right?
So, it's, it, we, we're flexible in terms of mixing and matching, and we, we did just hire someone.
Right, we've got a, a new person.
Let's, Letreese, yes, I don't remember, either that or the other, she just started this week, or using, and she's heading up this.
Yeah, that customer service billing system, not for, and then, we have Renee down in Alabama, and she's, works with Letreese now, and she's just a, you know, a wizard when it comes to digging into, you know, the current system processes, procedures, you know, how does it get from the time the meter read, to the time the bill's printed, you know, what are the processes and procedures, so that, you know, somebody hooks on, you make sure that they're in the system, and get a bill, start getting a bill, things like that. So that, you know, somebody hooks on, you make sure that they're in the system and get a bill, start getting a bill, things like that. And as well as, we have things where, you know, you've got places that you don't bill, like Town Hall, okay. Yes, we need to make sure those are metered and in the system, because that's non-revenue water. That's water loss if you're not metering it.
At least that technology is there.
Right.
It's not, you know, it's a pill.
So, you know, we can, we can provide all that kind of support.
Yes, we need to know.
Well, it's just a matter of, because the state is becoming more and more interested in loss levels. And so, if we have the data, we can, we can go to them and say, first thing is, we can go to all of us together. Say, "We have a problem, or we could, you know, we could be doing better." There are a lot of issues that get in the meter.
You know, the unique thing of always doing business with Severn Trent was you're a worldwide company, and you've experienced these problems all over the country at some point or the other. And by us at least asking, at least maybe, so, without beating that horse too bad, let's move on to this. But you know what direction, now, I, I'd like to get more information on that.
Okay, alright. I'd like to work with you, Louis, Steve, and-
I, I like, I, there's one question was, online payments, we could pay directly to you? There's not a astronomical fee, do you know that, or?
We, we've got that set up. It's usually through a third party, and oftentimes there's fees associated with it.
There's always gonna be a third party. You don't have to be online for the money.
Right.
But the one who's paying it is paying the money.
Okay.
That's unaffordable.
I'd always be for it.
Unfortunately, yes, yes, because, you know, if you pay online with a credit card or a debit card, they're gonna charge you two percent or four percent.
Well, that's a little bit different prospect, yeah, where cars to pay, about that.
Yeah, so, but, you know, we can work on that. There isn't a billing system that I've heard of yet that has the ability to, for a customer to go online and see his usages and things like that. There hasn't been one really coming out yet. With the advent of all these automatic meter reading systems, I think that's gonna be down the road here shortly.
That leads me to, Steve and I had talked last week about an issue, and he brought up a fantastic idea that I know existed, where the, the meters, once a month, are transmitted to a, like, one neighborhood would have one collection area, and then that would be transmitted to the town, correct?
Right, and actually, you could have it set up, I've been told by our meter people senses that you've got systems whereby you could have a default of, where somebody else today immediately sent a message to your computer, "This is our much money you want to spend on this," so that you can get this.
And you can get readings paid for.
You can get readings so that, and you can notify, I mean, do you see that period?
Right, and we give immediate alerts.
Somebody waiting a quarter, and racking up an enormous year of this.
Fortunately, we hear that comment on the-
You know, a couple of days in a row, and you can just hit on the phone.
Right.
And say, you know, this is the fact that our system expenses associated with that.
I know, and, I, I look at the expense side, I look at, I look at all sides, I look at all sides.
And it also allows you to bill more frequently, shoot more bills less. Something, some only, some only gives value of finding that, by doing it more frequently, they, they get away from these issues of enormous expenditures of something I don't know about. And you go around ninety days, and you get the real problem.
And then we have to go back and redo the rate in which we're billing it, that if we're still pumping out the bills as we're currently doing that, that's standing.
I'm just saying.
Well, those are things that have been brought up.
In addition, one of the issues you've got with water loss is the fact that, you know, Steve reads these meters, that the water is pumping into the system every day, okay? But the billing system is on a quarterly cycle. So, you don't, you know, you're having to estimate that, or try to predict it after a year. And that takes some of the doubt, but, you know.
Well, how much does it cost this, how much would a system like that cost? And then how much, we're, we're, we can't find a percentage right now. I forget what the percentage was that was, that was given to it, probably twenty-one percent or something, or more. So, Mark, it's twenty-one percent combined. So, again, take a look, if we could find ten percent of that, that is billable water, that would offset the cost. And then in the long run of, of seven years from now, is that where the break even is? That's what I'm saying, I, I wanna see for the town residents later on, where is that, again, where is that intersecting line? And I would prefer to be in the forefront of technology instead of constantly chasing this. Because if it's fifteen years from now, there's obviously something new where we're going now. But if we're in the beginning of it right now, we'd actually push it back to twenty years before we would have to do anything. What's the difference?
I think that problem needs a multi-pronged approach here, quite frankly. We discovered a couple places that weren't being planned, weren't being built, should be built. I don't think the ones that the decision is being not to build hospitals, I mean, not to build the fire company or the library or the church and forever. But we discovered ones that weren't being built, a couple were set up with time to date. We know, we know there are very, very old meters out there. We know that they don't over-read, they under-read. You know, that, that needs to be thoroughly addressed. Um, that, it, I think there needs a major revamping of some equipment out there. Whether it goes to some kind of radio read, or land-based thing, I mean, that's a decision that you made. And that will be possible, but we know that would generate additional revenue. You know, to tell you the least, because we know we're underbilling, we know we're not billing some, we were touching that as we discovered them. And what we know, there are underbilled accounts out there, just because the age of meters.
Another advantage to it is, with the water loss reduction program, you know, if you don't get it down with it, you know, what NDA says you're supposed to do with that, just by picking up non-revenue water and everything, then you're not trying to chase leaks and stuff like that. And that can be a big hole, trying, you know, chasing down and trying to find them to the point where you create a significant, you know, reduction in that water loss. You know, I think your bigger thing for the bug is to work out what you can out of low-end truth, which is, you have the difference between what's pumped into the system versus what's billed, and, and or metered and collected in the billings of whether it's revenue or non-revenue. Check that. And if we get those as high as possible, then you spend your money, I think, where it's most efficient. Fair enough. But we'd be glad to work with you on all of it, you know.
I, I think it's important for us to do it. And, you know, I can, I can see, I can go on my Elton gas, using Elton gas as an example on, on our natural gas system. I can go onto and pay my bill and see, and actually see my usage on, on a daily basis. And I know that we can get to that point. We can do the same thing with Delmarva, and it's, Elton gas is not billing in Elton. They're not billing in Elton. So, I think that, I think we all agree that we want to move forward with technology. And I know we, we priced the meters earlier on where it could be that beacon, that one beacon, and you just ride by, like they do, Delmarva doesn't read every meter. They, they go through with the beacon, and the same thing with the gas company. And I think that's where we'd like to go. We'd like to get to endgame, and-
There's not your thing anymore. I don't remember that either, so we want to kind of start trying. And that's where it almost continues, yes. And that's how, that's when you get the ability to call up your, your usage online and see what's at what you need.
We, we have, I think we have probably over seven thousand meters, eight thousand meters.
We're just short of seven thousand accounts.
A little, little short. And, and if we could budget this out over, let's say, the next seven years, and if we could get more done in one, any certain year, then I think that we could, it'll, it would do a couple things for us. One thing that we've talked about has always been the in-home, in-house audit, where we can go in. Sidney, I wish I could say Sidney's last name, but Sidney with, what is it easy for you to say? But Sid continues to stress about the, we've been, we, we know that there's residents in the town of Elton, because of the code many, many years ago, that they're discharging stormwater into the sewer system. We know that. And, and this is one way that when we go in to replace the meters, it's not that we're going there to find or attack anyone. We just want to make sure that when the state of Maryland hits us in two thousand, I forget what year it is, two thousand, they just moved it up, that, that we, we can't have this anymore. And I think if we do it as a team and, and match this thing out, I think we'll go a long ways with it. So, without beating that, you know where, where we'd like to move forward with this, if we could, in some way, at least get some information. Alright, let's go to the capital equipment for the wastewater treatment plant.
First is a new bucket monitor for the, for the mill.
Yeah.
Yes, I did.
You have to speak up, you have to speak up to some stuff.
It's a grinder, it's a grinder for the inflow, for the big El, for the main inflow pump. Pumps at the big El pump station. What we basically would be using that for is, as a bypass, in case something happened to this new spiral stream that we just installed. If that were to go down, and we have to work on it, we have this as a backup.
I, I know you're gonna tell me all these are, if there's a one, two, and three rating you could give them, and all of them are gonna be ones, is this a one?
I would say a point five.
Be one high, or?
One being high?
No, it would, it would-
You think it would be high?
Because you have a grinder, but it's-
We've got two right now, right?
Got two.
Put there and buried in that shade.
Okay, alright.
The next item is our actuators, which are just automatic gates for the inflow.
Currently, what are we doing physically, pulling them up by?
Just by wheels, they're-
Okay.
We like to have the ability to remotely open and close them.
Okay.
I'm gonna, I'm jumping in on you.
That's very nice.
If this, you know, for example, if the screen were to fail, it could actuate to close the gate to, to that channel. You know, let's say it trips, something binds up in there, or whatever. It trips, sends out an alarm, switches, opens one gate and closes another, and tells it, "What if you're a grinder?" Let's hope you address the problem in the back. Other than, other than that, it's a call-out, and, you know, which is not a problem, it's just, that's the kind of way.
Okay.
And it's also, that's the way it was designed originally, if we had floods in that wet well, and it ruined the existing actuator, that's why they're doing it right now.
Okay. Three and four, three and four, I know if you, if you have a check valve issue, we gotta get them replaced.
Yeah.
I don't want the flow to go the wrong way.
Yeah. Five, the bearings for the rack rotors, we've discussed some of that, and that might be something helpful.
Right, right. There's nine rotors out there, they're all sitting on Phillips lock bearings. And this is what puts the air into the wastewater, okay? And they're very long, heavy rotors. You know, the shafts are probably what, three inch, four inch? Somewhere close to six inch? Okay, yeah. We've got one where the bearing has scored the shaft. And what we want to do is, you know, replace those bearings and get the shaft repaired. And then take a longer look at, maybe doing these over a season or so of time. They're seven years old. We should get probably a little bit more life out of them, but if, you know, budget for it, then, you know, it's there in case we do have to, have to use it.
Okay.
It's irritable. The rating on those bearings is that ninety percent of them should still be in service after a hundred thousand hours. That's roughly what we did that, eleven plus years of continuous operation. So, you still are gonna have ten percent failure rate in that time for, for whatever reason. So, if we can set up a program where we're starting to get, maybe two persons with light, average like those bearings, we can look at, rather than waiting for a lot of them to fail, we can start looking at the ones. And we'd like to, we talked, you know, the day about instituting a more rigorous predictive maintenance program on those things, we drive, so you have your boxes. So, you know, we can get, get, get ahead of the game with those, I think we need better, in better field.
This one, they've got the shaft scored, we go ahead and fix that, and you take the bearings and we'll send them back, hopefully send it back to the manufacturer, he gives some failure analysis on these techniques, and what we need to do to help their staff with the other eight.
So, definitely, it'd be the crane to actually pull these common meters out, these grinders. Some, some years old, and it's, but it's a bad shape, it's really not functioning right now.
You're talking about the hoist?
Yeah, okay.
It's not running right now, it's not very easy missing from it, you know? It's not working, and they don't have any way of lifting that bucket monitor out of there to service it.
Okay.
We'd have that one, cry every time, and then three times crying, something like that. That's what we gotta, slip on your bag with carry weight.
The next is upgrading the cranes and supports for the inflow pumps. We have it here now as a coffee, I believe, or are we doing it in this?
Yeah. It looks like it's been in, it's been in there for, it's been an adaption, it's kind of, it's something that was, it doesn't look like it was designed for that particular thing, that crane actually, the hook kind of stops about six feet up above the pump itself. And so, they have to, and then it only lifts just the pump. So, and there are other components in there that are heavy, that this crane doesn't act, can't even access it. So, it seems like that should be, that, that crane's still working, but it's something that should be considered.
Okay.
A little bit of function, I would, yeah.
Gotcha.
Uh, Washington was the junction boxes, of course, water land, these are sewer pumps, sewer pumping solutions. Kenzy, can you pull it? What's happening is the junction boxes are rusty, they're inside the actual-
But they've got junction boxes that are inside where the pumps up and the clothes to the utility power of the, and those junction boxes down in the wet well. Now, there's issues with confined space where you can't even get down in there without a major production. We'd like to get those boxes up above so that their surface mount and the connections are outside of that wet well rather than inside.
Have we had any cases where the wet well, you know, something failed, the wet well flooded, and it shut all those boxes out?
It has a real shortage of amount of pay.
They're sealed?
They are sealed, but they're corroded. And once they're in there, the problem is, they're real blue when first put them in. You can get them out, and access the connections and what have you, but, so, right here's the effort to put in, but it's a moon, you can't get the boxes were out of there, before they get used.
Take the sand, the sand?
Right, yes. The media, the sand filters, you know, has been, well, put in there back from the, by the first construction. Uh, it's very fractured, it's compacting to the point where we have to, it's, because of its fracture, it's eroding the air lip, I have to remove those and replace them. And we're having real problems with the amount, because it's packing, the sand's packing so tightly because of that fractured sand. It's, you know, it's almost like concrete down in there. So, it's major production, get those out. We'd like to get in there, now that we have the spiral with spring in, our spring is much better at that facility. We'd like to get in and start, you know, removing some of these filters and services, removing the old sand out, making sure everything inside is up to snuff, and then replacing it with the rounded sand, which is what you need to stop the filter's little flood, because that's a-
You're talking about the under drains and all that, when you're?
It's a, there's, it's not like-
They're a different thing, they're continuous backwater.
Oh, okay.
It's a deep bed sand filter? I suppose that's a specific back to sand.
That microflock, would they, would they do that works?
No, it's, so this Westsec is actually the main-
Okay, Westsec, yeah, take blood micro.
Yeah, what we're proposing here is that, you know, this is for the cost of the sand. Unfortunately, there's only a few ports in the United States that produce this type of sand, because it's very round. It's almost like little beaches. Uh, it's hard to even walk on it, but it gets very deep because you, you know, it pushes everywhere.
How many tons of this sand is this?
Six hundred and eighty-seven.
Six hundred and eighty-seven tons?
Yes.
The real question is, apparently, there was a problem during construction, and the contractor put the wrong sand in. It was called on it, and he had to take it out and replace it. But we're finding out we have to replace all the rest of it.
Well, please let us know, be, I, I don't know if that contractor is still in business or not, but-
Yeah.
We, we had one here with a company called Booth. They were the engineer for, for the water treatment plant.
Which is the one?
Oh, I'm sorry, it was the water building. I, I, I went for a-
That Galway Bay was the contract.
I remember the builders from the sand buildings.
Right.
These are, these are different kind of-
That was, uh-
Galway Bay was the contract.
Galway Bay, yeah, they're the contractors, but they would have followed specifications, and we had it inspected.
Apparently, the inspection caught the paint with the wrong sand in the first time, this is the story I heard. Then they had to replace it. Now, we're looking at the sand that was, it was replaced with, and it's fractured. And we do not know whether it was fractured through use, that would be somewhat unusual.
We could get a sample of that sand out of there at that point and analyze it and see if it was the correct sand, right?
For the most part, yes. That, and that's started some, that's along with discussion with Jayce about some outbreak, you know, maintenance difficulties he's having. Is that, you know, when I look at it, yes, this sand's very- Is that, you know, when I look at it, yes, this sand is very fractured. I'm used to looking at very rounded sand for these type of things.
Was there any warranty, uh, probably being cluttered now? How many years has it been now since?
The plant went into operation two thousand and eighteen, so.
Few years.
And we would probably do most of this work, I think with hope works out, we'd probably remove the sand. And then, you know, get down and inspect it with the structures, make sure everything, you know, the piping's all correct and all that. Get all the old stuff out of there and then this actually can come in in bags and you can use a hoist, a crane and dump it in or it comes in in matted trucks. So, you know, the way the filters are set up, we'd actually stage this over one or more years if we wanted to.
John, are we past our eight, eight years?
Well, there's pre-inspection occasions. The question is when is the statue to start? And typically it's one more you knew or should know that was a problem. So the name, the name, the year before the statue would be as holy as ever. There may be, there may be.
Alright. Like I said, we can stage this if you'd like, where there's thirty filters out there, so we can stage it and only do a certain number each year. It's not gonna cost you, you know, if you get less than a truckload, it costs you more money. But if you order it by the truckload, then, you know, you can try to stage it that way so that you have the same, you know. You have to order five truckloads and, um, to do that many filters.
Do you think it would be worthwhile, we talked about this a little bit, is that third party coming to sample you, you know, take it to the lab, get the analysis done? It would cost you money, but it would give you the record of what you have. And what they do is, with the media usually what they'll do is they'll take samples, what he's wanted. And if you want to pay the money, then they'll, they'll do the full test load, they'll do the gradation. And then they'll do an acid wash to see if it's got like a coating that fills up, you know, they have to watch it, it loses weight, they can tell you how much it's lost. That is, you know, it's a full analysis, I'm not sure it's really necessary, so, chance of going back against anybody, probably not.
Well, if they, I mean, probably it would be nice to answer this question, but the question I have is, somebody did inspection and found that they had the wrong sand. And had it removed and replaced, I can't imagine they didn't re-inspector.
Well, Sterns and Wheeler was the original contractor, I mean, the original engineer, Sterns and Wheeler is now GHD. So the contractor, I mean, the engineer, I mean, the engineer who did that, that was that company.
But there was an inspector that talked there.
Well, that's, of course, they, they were the inspectors for that project.
Yeah.
So I don't know, there, there's an inspection sheet probably somewhere that shows that. But finding it, I'm not sure when the sand motors were actually put in versus, or used. They could have put in two thousand and seven, probably in that, in the woods or two thousand and seven, you know, that core back. And finding, archiving that, those sheets, we wouldn't have, well, I don't know.
But one place to start would be.
Should be a very, if you wanted to go back there from one suit, it would cost make, many, many thousands because they're big corporations. That you would have to go against and it would take many years to resolve versus go ahead and put the sand in, you know what I mean? Huh? I don't know how much the board wants to spend on a suit, that's the thing, because we had to pay for that, that's ridiculous.
That's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of sand, you tell me how much it's worth to chase after. That's a lot of money.
Also as a contractor, would the con, I mean, you'd have to go against the engineer and contractor.
Yeah, I think we need to, we need to take.
You have the specs, you have the specs for that sand rotor, did he spec the sand? Did you see their spec?
We'd have to go back to that, I think, you'd have to check the bill. To see what the, if the contractor submitted and then the engineer approved that sand, and of course, you know, as if the. They always give the young engineers this, you read the spec, you get the contractor's supplemental, highlight check literally, you check off every, okay. Right kind of sand.
Okay, that's what me, I would have to go back and approve.
So you approve the contractor's putting in there. Now, I heard a story that they put in the wrong sand, I don't know whether the engineer missed it and then approved it. And then they had to pull it out, this is the story, I wasn't involved for the instructor. So, we could probably document all of that in the record, in your file somewhere. Well, you have some.
My God, I think there's cases of files.
That's part of the big.
That was a, he can slide you a thing, you know.
Nine dollars. For, for, if I were to blame in mine here, the, the, the sand is thirty, you said thirty different spots?
Thirty different filters.
Thirty different filters of sand?
Yes.
And I'm, I'm, and the way I'm visualizing this is the same way as a heat pump with filters. It, these, this sand filters out immediately, correct?
Right.
It's not fluid circled in particular.
Okay, so what is the efficiency side that if we just get it done, if it's gonna cost us a quarter of a mil? Instead of breaking it up, if we just did it one shot, what, how much of an increase in efficiency would we have? You follow what I'm asking?
Right.
Much like a plug, a filter, any pump, you take it out, you increase your efficiency, so really, the, the net there would be, we would actually, two hundred grand. Would we save fifty if we did it all at once? Follow, you, you got another question?
It's a low energy system.
Fair enough.
Okay. It uses air to lift the sand up. Water comes into the bottom of the filter through a radio arm and moves up and it fluidizes that sand. And then there's an airlift, or actually several airlifts that are lifting that sand up and taking it to the top. So at the top of the filter, you have your clean water and your sand is coming down, it's being washed and dumped in at the top too. So dirty water, dirty sand at the bottom, clean water, clean sand at the top, and that's a continuous moving system. But all it's using is fresh air, like, you know, acquiring to lift that sand up, so it's very low. Yeah. But it's a very, very thin filter, because they take a lot of loading, very easily recover very quickly versus a fixed bed filter. They have to be backwashed and.
That's, that's why I was thinking.
Yeah.
Alright, number twelve.
It's another one of mine. Yes. We've got a quote to upgrade the existing SCADA system, this is a control system. It also gives us remote access into what's happening at the wastewater plant, okay? And it monitors everything and automatically operates a lot of the things so that, you know, we can focus on how to fix things and make it better. But rather than trying to, quite much data, make minor adjustments all the time. So it controls the DO and the aeration basin, controls some of the energy that's going on. So, the existing system was put in when the plant was built, I believe, you know, two thousand and eight. It runs on Windows XP, which is no longer. So it's time to upgrade it. The, the cost for that is about seventy-five thousand, if I recall correctly, from GHD.
Yeah, from Dustin, is that where you got that from?
Yes. And a lot of that, I'd say two thirds of that cost is all tied up in licensing for the Wonderware software, okay? And Dustin did a great job of coming up with ways to reduce that, okay? Because, you know, if not, you could have had to replace, what, seven other panel views, I call them panel views, but they're actually mini industrial computers. And that would have been very expensive, but he's got this pared down pretty good. One of the things we discussed was expanding this SCADA system. Wastewater Plant is staffed twenty-four seven, okay? The water system is not staffed twelve, fourteen hours a day, okay? Alright, so if something goes on in the water system, like you had a big main break or, or something, fire in one part of town or something like that. We're relying on an older outdated system where a tank gets down to a certain level and it tells us that it's an alarm, gives an alarm. And it's not about it, it calls us out. If we can connect those systems along with the wells to the water plant SCADA system, then the guys at the water plant can watch and monitor. Or wastewater plant can watch and monitor that off hours. They can control pumps, turn them on and off, booster pump stations if there's an issue. And then hopefully re, you know, be a little bit more proactive, you start seeing a tank coming down and recognize that the rate fall more than it should be. Maybe I need to call somebody in, try to address this and then we can figure out why is it doing this, so.
Well, with the SCADA, ideally what you'd have is feedback from the booster pump station, it should be right, to build a town. You know, while the others look like that. If the power's dropping and you run it and you see, then you see a fail alarm on the booster pump or whatever, we can go power outage, whatever the alarm would be. You don't, you don't spend a lot of time investigating, you know what, if you need to go, if you need to go to the station. Some stations would actually allow you to switch to the standby pump. And then you put it in as a work order that the main pump failed, that the alternator failed, because the alternator should switch to the live pump, it didn't. So you, if you go to the station or maybe you start it remotely and the live pump does it, then it becomes, you know, just a maintenance item that you have to deal with quickly, but that's it, your system's not checked.
I, you know, I took this, I surveyed the system, took it and then gave that information to Dustin with GHD. And he came back with a price of three hundred to five hundred thousand and I. I'm not, I don't agree with that cost, I think we can get it done for a lower amount of money, but I just not have the time after you got the quote. And we'd really spend, get another integrator in here to look at it. I've got a couple people that I've worked with over the years that I'd rather have them come in and give a prior quote for a budgetary purpose. That I think would be less than this. And throw in the upgrade, I think we can come up with something that's gonna be less expensive going further. Existing Wonderware program is a price program, been around a long time, it's well. It, it's, it's an industry standard, but it's also a Ferrari that you use in driving a supermarket. Yeah, but that's what I put it. It doesn't do, you know, it's built for manufacturing in factories where you're running, you know, maybe a thousand to five thousand pieces an hour by, on a production line and it's. You know, it's got to control all that, we don't have to react that quickly with a walk on my side. But anyway, I think there's some, you know, some benefits there going forward, especially if you look at, you know. Operating the water plant versus the wells, you know, versus artesian, you know, how can we best control that? And it does, you know, gives us an opportunity to respond much faster when there is something that apply. But I'd like to be able to, you know, get a second budgetary quote on that, because I think this one is just.
Very good, that'd be good to get two, maybe even a third one.
But this does not include the Smart Bean Art Controller, which is a stable of the system, correct?
No, it's, that's tied into the existing SCADA system.
Yes, but it's, it's a distributed control where that controller controls the, the heart of the plant, the biological process. But it's discrete to that unit. The SCADA system looks at that and can, can display that information, but then it's all the other side systems that aren't, you know, that aren't necessarily part of that oxidation discussion. For the B, the supply of pumps going to it, the filters afterwards, the UV and all the rest of it, if you can integrate that, you can see it, what a problem's happening.
Alright, number thirteen, headworks analysis.
Okay, the existing industrial pretreatment program, been around for a while. Typically every five years you do a headworks analysis, collect samples out of the system and you determine, you know, where are you with respect to, you know. The amount of fluids coming into the wastewater plant versus what's being discharged and what, you know, the strength it had. And that determines what your local limit should be for things and possibly what you might surcharge for, if you have a surcharge program, things like that. We can't find any record of that analysis being done in the past five years. And MBE's asking us, we need to go ahead and start doing that. The twenty thousand is, we're not, our, part of the program is we do the monitoring and we do the reports, I think. But the actual program is not part of our scope, but we have people that live and brief this. So, you know, we've got some money in there for them to come in and review the program, make some recommendations. Possibly streamline the program, which you're actually supposed to do every five years also.
Do composite sampling or something?
Yeah, we do sampling at the headworks and then you actually go around town and try to do sampling where there's just mostly domestic wastewater. So you take that out of the industrial portion and determine what the difference is. Right.
So that's a requirement from MBE, it has to be done.
Gotcha.
Alright. Water treatment plant.
We have twenty thousand in for the water.
Did it leak in there?
Isn't that the, is that the same roof you were just talking about?
Waste water.
This is a water floor.
It's switched to a clean water site.
That was, what's that, nearly in nineteen eighty something?
Should have flat roof or should have deep roof or?
Flat. Worst roof in the world. And then we might go put up.
See, they don't leak, they don't leak, if they ever start leaking.
Yeah, this one, our roof leaks all the time, you know, this flat roof.
Alright, Peyton interior.
Peyton interior. Yeah, when it's last hot and it's been several years, but it's been pretty rough.
High moisture environment, it's maybe, since they're going over.
And we need to kind of tip over the water treatment thing so that we're not getting tank spray or anything else down in the water.
Can't tank today, you know.
People don't like paint water from out of town.
Okay, water plant.
Yeah, it was even worse. Rich, basically, can explain what we did there is take a look at the existing water treatment plants, there's two units at the plant, okay? They're manufactured originally by Netto and Michael Block. And that, they're now currently owned by Westec, which is also one for the sand filters. And, you know, parts of them need to be rehabbed every several years, you know, filter media needs to be taken out, examine the underdrain system. You know, is it still in a good shape, is it blown by whatever, so, Rich, you wanna catch up with what they?
Sure, thank you. There's two units like we were just talking about, they're in constant use. They, they are experiences of age and they are experiences of obsolescence. In the, it's now at that point where we need to do some work on them to either bring them up to parent standards or make them appropriate for the next ten to fifteen years. We did look at the interior of these, each of these two units, we did find some structural damage, we did find some media issues. So what we're proposing to do is upgrade the existing filters with a more automated system from Westec. Which replaces the existing water rebedding with sand and filters with an air unit. We're looking to replace the media unit, we're looking to remove some of the structural components that were in the tank interior together. Because frankly, they, they were at that point in failure. Not that the tanks never fall apart, but that these units, these structural components hold the portions of the units inside the tanks together. Now, the tanks themselves are in good shape, but the interior components of those tanks are starting to fall apart. So we really need to do some work on those two. With the plan of potentially using one at a time, and that can be done over a two-year period or if we can get both done sequentially within a couple of months of each other.
The thought was, you know, once we get to those two and five at service, then, you know, clean that artesian, we ought to be able to run one side, take one down. When they came in and inspected these units, they were in service, so they had a minimal amount of inspection. We'll be able to make sure that if we have time and we take them down, that if there's anything unidentified that we couldn't see, then let's go ahead and fix them up and get them down at that point in time.
In addition to that, we wanted to add some actuators to automate some of the existing manual components. manual components.
And include a new roll system.
Cold, I'm a little cold too. You are a short snail.
I am.
I seem to have lizard jackets on.
So, it also includes adding, you know, tying controls in, you know, new controls there, because these are, we're putting in fire tubes, having much in the way of the control system. New controls in and then tying that into the existing SCADA system to, so that we can see everything. They can see what's at the wastewater plant, we can see what's at the water plant, we can see what's in the system. But again, this is somewhat of a budgetary number. And, you know, if you decide to do it over, split it over a two-year period, some of these costs will be more the first year and less the second year. Because, you know, the valves and the SCADA system would be done probably the first year and then, you know, it'll be a rollercoaster the second year.
All right, the item number four.
Emergency generator for the water system. This is kind of just a recommendation or an idea to get feeling of what, what needs it, I think.
Do we current, we currently don't have an emergency generator at the water plant?
We run out of water, we use artesian.
That is our emergency.
Which does, yeah, that's our emergency water. And that's fine, you may want to think about, you know, with the costs of what you're paying, artesian, do, you know, maybe look at it, some emergency generators for the wells would be less expensive than water.
What do you, you just bought an emergency generator, what was that?
For two, two R, generator.
Oh, great.
Yeah, okay, good. And well, well, five will be hooked into our fifteen hundred K.
And how much was that unit?
A hundred and fifty, it's single phase, five hundred forty grams, something like that. It had the single phase and we used the VFDs to convert some three phase pumping pumps for, because there's a three phase, three phase service there.
Artesian.
Does that bump up our minimum usage?
I think, no, we're at the same rate.
Always, we're always two fifty minimum. If you use three million gallons or two million gallons, whatever it is, that goes back to two fifty, there was no escalation clause in there. And if we have, I don't think, we've been out of power for when, I don't remember when that was, we've been out of power. That's what we never did, we hooked into a one time, but on the generator. Yeah, see that, I don't think that's when we get our backup works.
Well, we have a generator more useful if you're a hurricane.
Yeah. Well, listen, that's, nothing wrong with having that backup. Okay, the last item you had, replace the cover on the Red Hill reservoir or actually put a new ground storage tank in.
Guys just repaired.
Practically repatched.
Well, it's just, we have a little history that, I remember years ago, there were some issues with, it was a leak at the reservoirs, we relined it, that seemed to.
We've done it twice, just with Aquilon liners in it twice.
And that seems to solve the problem, you know, the covers that have to be maintained in their fifth grade.
A U D. Forty five mill, but they only last so long.
Right.
And the reservoirs were built nineteen thirty five or something like that, or, you know, Roosevelt.
Now, the last time we did the reservoir, so I think was like in two thousand?
No, I don't think we've done it since nineteen, yeah, nineteen nineties, I think. I have specs on it.
Was the recommendation?
What I do is the same thing I always do, I always get board, pump, pump for procurement, they come over with robotic and then they do an inspection internally. We've done this, we do the same process for our tanks, they in there, we do an evaluation and then basically it looks like it needs to be upgraded. Tank, for example, we engineer and we do it, just like I did our Walnut Hill tower.
You do it annually? You expect?
No, no, we don't have to do it annually, no.
It was always not that it was inspected?
You mean the Red Hill reservoir?
Yeah.
It was inspected, but I can't say, but it didn't, it didn't require us to replace the, the covers and one.
There was, years ago, there was a problem.
Yeah, on the.
Along the bank, on the outside, we weren't sure.
All four sides.
We weren't sure where it was coming from. And, you know, there's no way to see it, so, there was determination, they made the tape it down and this type.
How many, how many gallons is the reservoir?
Nine hundred thousand of each one.
So we wouldn't be able to actually build a two million gallon water tower?
We could, but if that was Brian Flickinger up there one day about doing it, because actually you probably don't need to do an elevated tower, you can do a stand bike because of the elevation. And the stand bike would be less expensive than an elevator tank.
Or do it in ground.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, because stuff's so high, you could.
Probably, you could be, you know.
But to put it in perspective, our, our water tower on Walnut Hill and the one over Bell Hill, they're five hundred thousand gallon tanks?
Four hundred is Bell Hill, five hundred is Walnut Hill.
So we're looking at.
And blue ball is five hundred.
We would need to capture four times that capacity.
What do you mean?
Well, if we got two million gallons in the reservoir.
What we would do, if we did it, we'd probably take one out of service, build our, our tank and then, then fill that tank and then take the other one out. Like, that's how you do it. I, I met with Brian Flickinger, remember, about how techy they're doing it? Actually, I would like to do that rather than keep throwing a plastic wrapper around the disintegrating concrete tank.
Yeah, I think that's something we should try to move forward with, I think we could do a water tower or a stand bike or some sort of thing.
Well, the real level, you have the lower, lower level tank, the booster station, it provides you sort of the same thing, but, you know, I don't really have visual claims on probably with the local people because of where it's located and.
Listen, we're going to be, if we can get that thing up, going up, we'll be able to put a couple antennas on it and pay for all that in no time. We'll be able to put a couple, at fifteen thousand dollars per year, we only need to handle those on that tower.
And also works for the Wi-Fi for your meter.
That's true, that's true. Uh, do you guys have anything else?
I got one question I was wondering, now, are we doing our SCADA program with the chemicals? And I have found that you guys used to give us a kickback at end of year.
It wasn't, wasn't a kickback.
It wasn't a kickback, it was a SCADA.
We just reconciled the last year, but looking back, even additional year, there was nothing owed to either side based on the contract here in eleven thirty fifteen.
I think what, what you were mentioning was, in what year was it that Severn Trent actually returned a check back for two hundred thousand dollars back to the account? So it was a nice, nice suggestion. Mr. Lemon, you had a comment?
We can raise a piece.
You mentioned prioritizing, is that something you want or have asked for?
Yes, we're getting it.
We're getting it, okay. How about the life expectancy on each of the tanks? Is that the hustle to know that?
Oh, it'd be great to know that, thank you.
Another question is if they would gamcharred out what they're doing here, I think you would be able to see when installations are done, when payments are done. Some of this stuff that's out here starts today, but goes over a period of time. So if we had something like that, where we give you a picture, at least, you know, from this, this installation plus the financials, you know, what you're, what you're getting.
Yep.
I assume you get warnings.
Absolutely.
They're not as long as you would like.
Maybe we should negotiate.
Well, yes, it's usually, sort of the industry standard is like one year of after installation. You can do that, you just pay more for the, you pay more.
Yeah, you have to pay more.
Thank you. For key, for key pieces of equipment, that's a good idea. You know, for a big piece of equipment, you really are going to spend a ton of money on, you want to have that, but for your standard gearbox and bearings and all that. Yeah, you know, you just, you know, the rule of thumb in, in, in the business is for equipment, it's twenty, twenty-five years. Generally, you'd make, infrastructure's forty, fifty years longer, many finite circumstances, you know, the cold climate, freeze thaw issues. Yeah, those are sort of the rules of thumb when you start talking about these. Most equipment will last twenty years if it's well maintained and then rebuilt occasionally. And at that point, a lot of times you can't get parts anymore, they're obsolete, you know, means we'll get new ones.
Yeah.
It doesn't take long for these parts to stop making the parts work.
Well, thank you Severn Trent for bringing that to the table. Thank you guys so much. Same here, guys. Now, Mary. All right, actually, the next item we have is the farmers market request for a waiver of. With the, the farmers market consensus, and we have one day, I think it's one day, a month. Michelle, you can go ahead and.
Three, three, and eight.
Yeah, Thursday, Friday, two until six, and then Saturday, eight until one.
So Thursday, Friday, two to six, Saturday, eight to one.
Correct. What I'm doing is, we go to different farmers markets and meeting different people and different producers. And what I'm learning is, these people don't do one farmer's market, they move it around and they have following. And we have one particular vendor, Martha and Norman, they come on Thursday afternoon, they have a following, and they call us really what a farmer's market is, they see them, they talk about recipes, they share recipes with one another, and they, they'll come back after, they share. But they don't want to do it for the time. They'll go to Morrisby's on Friday, they're going to pull another one on Saturday, and you're going to find out, this is what I'm hoping for, that they are going to do anything.
We do do ones a week.
Right. That makes sense, because that exposes them to different areas of the county at different times, so that they're not married in one place.
Trying to commend Michelle, she has been working very hard on this farmer's market to seek new people and.
To bring about a new concept.
A new concept, exactly.
And thank you, but also too, the ones that I'm born to, the ones that mean it, the serious ones, they become community centers. You've got people going there with their, with their kids, they meet their neighbors, they stand around and chat, they do all this shopping there, and you can see it, it's a, it's a definition of community. And it's exciting to see, and to think that we could do that down here, to me, that's an awesome idea.
Well, to my bad, on the, the Alton Lions are designed for many ones to redo the zebra that's down there. We're just waiting for the permission from the theater, theater park, yes. One already said, yes, they think it's great because we're a glad pain, but anything that's needed, but like, there's, we'll add music there at the same time that they're going to be down there, like, to Friday night.
I'd like to see a final concept, I didn't know about that, I'd like to see everything tied together and how it would be.
Yeah, we're just waiting for the okay.
So, getting back to the original request, the reason I'm asking for the board's opinion about this is, I had a third winery approach and asked about, would you be offering tastings down there? So, of course, that would require a lawyer from the board. I cannot give you an exact date because I don't know what these wineries would want to do and would they even want to be buried through a monthly event? I doubt they would. But if you can tie it in with some of your, to the first Friday events or some events such as that, that the public would know that this is coming. Again, no sales, but it's another, it's another opportunity to grab a group of people who would not normally come down town on Friday evenings, and we can snag them and have a walk.
Renting spots also, or is this?
That's what I want to do. We rent these, we rent these spaces out, it's going to be a hundred and twenty for a season. So if someone, if a winery wanted to come in on a one-time event, certainly offer it at a discounted price, not a hundred and twenty dollars, because they wouldn't be there for the season, but determine a one-time fee that would give them the ability to stand there in that space and offer a tasting.
And these vineyards, I think the ones you've solicited are all Cecil County vineyards?
One is out of Hartford County, and he actually, it was kind of fun the way we wound up meeting on the other, it definitely don't matter. But he is out of Hartford County and that's Legends Winery. The other two are out of Cecil County, one is the Turkey Point, and then the other one who just called me, actually, they called Cecil County Farmer's Market, they referred it to me, and he has a place in Brice.
No family?
No, it's not, he doesn't have it, so it's whatever. It's an initial.
No point?
No, it's a BG.
DJ?
But, yeah, that's probably, I need to know what I can say, I need to know how I can answer people. So in fact, I can at least say there's an interest in the board doing this, I can at least get some kind of an idea of what I didn't say when I talked to them.
Well, we'll take the other one at once, thank you. Okay, I think next is up Mary, but I think we had, Mary, come on down for, are you part of the Elton Municipal Building Committee? Can we discuss it? Okay. Is this a new agree, is this something new? This is what we've always had?
Well, the issue that I had is that there are long, long certain processes, let's say when you have a public space, and you probably need to amend the wording in that significantly and probably have to recognize that, first of all, you don't have a rent space in progress, but if you choose to do it, you're not going to be able to limit the way that I think some people have the vision. It's kind of a difficult area, it's first and then it's right, it's soft for, if you can do a twenty, I think, twenty United States Supreme Court cases that would be said that would be a problem. United States Supreme Court cases that would be said to be a problem. Just being...
So you're saying if we rent it, it should be rented to anybody for any reason?
For any reason. Now, the, the Supreme Court has, has recognized the difference between political free speech or religious free speech, or those other kinds of free, free speeches, purely commercial speech. If you want to limit the commercial activities, I think we could do that. But when it comes to limiting others, I don't think we can do that. And, you know, it's sort of inevitable, at some point, we're going to get sued, it's a federal suit, and you pay all the expenses.
And even though anybody could rent it, could you tag what type of activities can be held?
That's, that's a good but very broad question. For example, you couldn't filter their literature that they might use for being held. You're not going to be able to limit what they're talking about there. You can certainly say, I noticed one of the things, you can't have any open candles, open flames. That's a safety really thing, that's reasonable restriction. When you, when you start limiting content of speech, and these are key areas, religious and political, you know, so we, we set a high level of scrutiny. I mean, any, any regulation that limits it gets the highest level of scrutiny in court. This is just, again, do I, I don't know how much money the town makes from renting it, I suspect not a lot. And maybe it isn't worth conversely, it's public space, and it's reasonable to have it available for people, you know, the community to use, and it's reasonable to have, and it's okay to have reasonable restrictions for the safety and things like that, to make people abide by the rules and have reasonable rules. And you start getting into who can use it, who can't, and what they say and what they can say, then it's, then it's a problem. And I would caution that stuff. I think, I think that, that the intent of the restriction is just to sort of have an aura of neutrality for the town. We're not endorsing any of these guys. The reality is, what you can do at your house or on private property is different than what you can do in the public space. And the Supreme Court has even recognized that the food court at the mall is public space, they couldn't do this in a community mall. So, you know, once, once you open it to the public, you open it to the public. So by wording, um...
What, what language are you striking here? Did you do a revision, recommend, you know, an equal?
By wording, they used up the facility must be controlled by the director of the facility that wouldn't stand in, in place of this, because they're the ones that hold the programs throughout the recreation? Well, I mean, certainly the scheduling, if the town, if, um, recreation, pardon, parts of recreation had something scheduled, the facility, they, they had these, people were having, where there wasn't a rent, but having one around for that series. And I heard you say about the literature.
There were a couple pages there.
The literature, wouldn't that fall under the same blanket that the school system uses when they have, like, just say they have boy scouts there, you can't just bring any literature and lay a chair, it must be screened by, uh, the staff, you know what I'm talking about, right? Give it to you.
But that's still a school average for school students.
What I'm saying is, literature, when you mentioned about the literature being up there, not any of it should be acceptable, and then...
Dead woman?
Yeah. Yeah. Couldn't be able to screen like this, right? Not in writing and not per... I, I know, we have, they have schools where we use...
Well, the school, you have to pronounce, go through the process. You have to send it to the school board, the school board takes it, it's a certain size, they put it in the packet, the three hundred kids, they don't allow it to...
That's not, you, that's not, the school was, the school was not considered a legitimate event, like that.
Oh, um...
Not, I'm not understanding.
Let me, let me explain to you that much.
And investigating, that was the reason I asked, the other, the, you can't look at this. The school board that I'm aware of, uh, it does not hold underneath the same domain as public use as this upstairs, because it's not technically a governmental building.
So that's used, the school has used the general...
No, I, I don't disagree.
I'm just asking a question. So you've... My question is, if, if they decide that they're going to release the general account, and then they say, what you want to limit it, we're not going to rent it out to the presbyters. Right. Okay. And so, okay, you will rent it out to the presbyters, but we're not going to let them end up, end up their literature there on the terms when they rent. Now... Sir, you would say that to everyone, I wouldn't want without literature for anyone, so that would, would be a clause there. No, I'm saying you will not go with it. I mean, I was wrong with suggesting, this is not endorsed, and you can, and you can, you know, I mean, this is the, at some point in time, some controversial group will come and apply for credit for it, who will come and apply to use that space, and they're going to be controversial, and the emotions are going to be, we don't want the town to be viewed as endorsing that group. Conversely, you can't deny it to them by virtue of the fact that they're a controversial group, or they believe in things you don't believe in, or they, or they say and do obnoxious things. And there are plenty of groups out there in the world today that say and do obnoxious things. If you don't want them here, then the best answer is, don't rent it out to the public.
What, what my suggestion on this is, is that any type of rent out, or, or Mary, and whatever programs she has, the only way to circumvent that, this way, you're not stepping on anybody's burden of rights, and we're all, it would have to be programs through her, you wouldn't rent it to anybody, you wouldn't allow anybody to have it. At least, unless it's a program, right? Or what you don't, then, is, is a way to, to insulate the town, is to make sure that it's just a program that, that Mary is, that Mary has. That's the only way you do it, where you give it to everybody.
Well, I, I, I disagree. I think it should be rentable, so it's, it's a large space, it's great to rent out, has the caterers kitchenette put in it for that reason. The American Legion, who has a nice size hall you could use, their hall is not going to be finished till July now, they're, they're renovating it. This hall is very busy. I know for a fact, because we rented it for our, my grandson's first birthday, it was a snowstorm, I had to get another date, I have to wait till February twenty eighth, in later in the day, because the, um, baseball's having signups up there in the morning part of it. So it is used a lot, and I, you know, where it says thirty dollars for the room and twenty for the kitchen, I had said to Mary, it should just be fifty an hour, the whole thing. And the only, I don't know if you can do this, and I'm going to question it, if it was, because we questioned it because of a campaign, political type event, could the cost be a hundred dollars an hour? No. That was, we're still discriminating.
Well, the reality is that, that if, if Republicans and Democrats wanted to use it, I don't think those parties are likely to sue you over a fifty dollar thing.
Well, I, I don't want to do it if it's discriminating, you know, I don't, you know, and I'm just saying it here myself.
That controversial group that would be inclined to sue you over a fifty dollar an hour, I mean, is the group that has an axe around about the town in the first place. And in federal court, if there's, if there are damages, which could be a dollar, you're not paying those sides attorney fees. And they're going to want to get through discovery to figure out whether the damage occurred in one dollar or two dollars. In the meantime, you're running eighty-five to a hundred thousand dollar attorney fees on the side, because they haven't had any, any consent to stop. Theirs is charging a dollar, quite crazy, because they know what's going to be at the end. The town's got enough money to head. So, those are the, those are the difficulties. And again, as I said, I understand, it seems to me anyway, I think, to have this air of neutrality out of town, we're not endorsing these things. You know, it could be the party that'll register in, or the party you're registered in, just no favorism for anybody. But the problem is, when you start limiting that, you run up against a long string of Supreme Court cases, and ultimately somebody, you're ready to wrestle about exposure over what is probably not worth a lot of exposure.
So maybe perhaps it is something they're using for the room, and it's an invitation type event, that on the bottom, we have something put on there saying the town does not agree or disagree with, you know, some sort of a thing on the bottom, that they have to put on their flyer saying that we're not a part of it.
That's probably a reasonable thing to require. I don't think there's any wrong there at all. Just make that requirement along the long list of things that we have here.
Because they do that on commentaries, when you see someone come on one of the television channels or something, and do that little blur.
Because it puts a little five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, has to go.
Exactly.
And Mr. Smith or Mrs. Jones calls and breaks because you rented it out to whoever it's, they don't have any choice.
Well, you know, with, if we look at our long-term plan, if we have a long-term plan, I would, I would make this comment, that listening to our police department, that they need room for expansion, 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 at some point, this board's going to either have to recognize that we have to find another facility for the police department or let them move upstairs.
And we have a room like this, so we need some, that we could rent it out, make money from.
I guess, I guess my point is, that room upstairs may eventually be, uh, additional offices, if it's possible. I don't know if, if that, Lewis's plans are not, the plans moving forward, but...
Well, the, the building was designed to carry a lot, a load up there, you know, people, so it could be easily petitioned.
I was here when we did, did this building, I remember very clearly, we built that room up there for a, it was actually a community room, but it gave us room for expansion. And then the room that you're building next door that we bought, I say, make a, make sure I'm going the right way, the, the building that you, you're in, we bought that for an, actually, an expansion of, uh, parking or, or expansion of the building that we ever needed. So there was, uh, we were thinking a little bit ahead when it came to those things, but now it's, uh, it hits, it hits a little quicker, do you think? We're here a little faster. Very good, so I guess, uh...
I have, I have mixed feelings on this, though. I really don't.
My, before we get off of it, the question was, I had yelled at Peter, who lined up the alcohol, um, usage in there, and it was just a topic that came up in my conversation with Michelle, that my understanding is, it would be a policy that, and if there was alcohol being used up there, the requirement would be that it would be served by a, a heater that was licensed to serve. And that would be a part of it. Otherwise, my suggestion would be don't let it on, you know, like...
Well, they still have to get a waiver, though. Still need a waiver.
Right. I would say, don't, don't grant it unless they have a heater serving.
It goes through their licensing.
Right. It goes through their licensing, and you can get some tan out of the middle of that issue.
What is the long-term reason for Parks and Rec in that room, as far as, unless it's a birthday party, if the, if the Republican thing up there, again, I, I have mixed feelings about it. I would rather see the room be used for, for you want, for, for activities and to, to serve the public that way, after-school activities, um, you know, tutoring, that type, that type of thing, than to, again, compete with the BFW or American Legion or, or somebody, somebody else that's relying on that stuff. So it's kind of, I'm back and forth on that. Like, again, I, I think that it should be strictly for Parks and Rec to come up with activities for our community, and limit the exposure, um, that, the audience of, of some of the groups that are out there, I mean, we all can think of a whole bunch of different groups, and it's just, I just don't like the exposure, and I think that Parks and Rec should have more opportunities to do something up there, instead of renting it out, you know what I mean?
We rent, right now, we'd be renting out one, so we do schedule auction up first, and then there's based up there, but I, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. I, yeah. Was it one down here or two?
No. No, I'm, I'm actually, I told my daughters that, I said, well, we depend on VFW, and she said, no, I'm at a birthday party where there's a bar.
You know, and the thing, I looked for, I looked for a place when both my daughters graduated, I ended up having it in my backyard, with the tent up and, and everything else, because, yeah, some of these places are, are pretty expensive, you know, and if you, you leave it out, it, it pushes the, those people that spend money, to spend it with the town, you know, we should be developing the other and having services. I like the idea of, of after-school activity, and I would promote something like that as far as community, as far as tutoring, you know, those type of things. Have people come here, set it over the house, you could have things set up after school, you know, education-wise.
It's a boys' girls club.
There's the American, there's the standards we're looking at for you.
Obviously, that one's...
We have, you know, dance starting at five o'clock, so they don't even go there for, you know, the, that room's from five to nine.
Dance, how many kids have a dance?
Four, thirty-nine, two or three kids.
Yeah.
So it's booked every weeknight, and they don't even come in till about four-thirty at that, and then we have to make a meeting, because we're, we're using them, it's just, that's the only space that we have. And we're not only using that, we're using our office for eight hours a week, in front of our office for eight hours a week for dance. Maybe we don't have a rent there.
Is there anything else that we could do on weekends?
We can, we, we compete with, um, like, soccer, like the soccer league, you know, they're, they're on Saturdays and Sundays, and, um, Little League will be Saturdays and Sunday, so I, we, we found that we don't do it first thing Saturday morning, we'll do a huge tryout, um, as far as the actual programs.
We have the program and...
Yeah, that's like all, we go up to...
Right, so we...
But we, we kind of help up, we're going in further than that. We'll do like, once a month or twice a month, we'll do a five to ten activity, and, you know, one time a week, each kid will come one at a time, so never show up, we'll have these times, but...
So I guess going back to the upstairs, what you're saying to us is either it's basically let everyone use it, or you can just use it as your part, or your program.
Right.
So I think that that's a decision we'll have to make Wednesday night or in the near future, let's put forward on it, what we have to do. I'm, I have, I have mixed feelings on it, too, I really do. I really do. I don't think you can give me any more input, I think it's a decision that we need to probably ask the, our residents, how they feel, to a little bit, to know the, the good and the bad, and, um, we've been very fortunate, we haven't had any issues yet, but it's, it's just a matter of time. Just a matter of time.
Well, can we have this, did they, like, seven years ago, something like that, or somebody would come in, a replay would come in, come over, like, try to speak to them out, and turn them in? I don't know what the replays.
They didn't turn them down. They could turn them down. Yeah, there was a, something outside there picketing, but hopefully... Yeah, there was a, something outside, they were picketing, but, uh, what was it?
Weird, they only be in the county room.
They held it in the county room, yeah.
There is, you know, it's free speech, so, we can't say no, so they did...
We can't say no, yeah.
Yeah, forty people showed up at a rally right there in the media room, in the council room.
I remember many years ago, uh, there was a march here in town, and, uh, the, the board's position, I wasn't on the board back then, but the board's position was, you know, they're, they're going to march, going to allow them to march, but we suggest, you know, use your own opinion, whether you want to attend, and I don't think anyone attended.
No, they denied them, and then we, uh, I said, they carried down in the Federal District Court in Baltimore, and then the judge ruled that they hadn't, had to march, so that they came up here, but it's, so I've been down that road.
Very good, well, listen, let's adjourn this meeting, uh, at two-thirty five.